Welcome to the beginning here tonight. I'm not a very well-known gentleman for today's reception. I guess first, just to get out of the way, we'll talk about the resolutions that we have in front of us tonight. Basically, as everyone's aware, we received a letter from the town supervisor last week asking us, basically says, "Under the current contract, the number of units that are allowed in Hamiltonian Park is restricted based on a number," which they are currently at. And they want to bring heritage on in Hamiltonian Park Sewer District. However, they can't do that under the contract because it specifies the number of units. So the supervisor has asked the village to allow these eighty new homes in under the current contract. And we've talked about that and talked to our council. And it's confusing because in the past, the supervisor, both in his letters and in his recent testimony during arbitration, has said that these contracts aren't fair, they're in need to be rewritten, and they are expired. So my feeling, and I believe this is shared by the board, is if we all agree, both villages and towns alike, that these contracts are in need of rewriting, why would we continue them by putting eighty new units into a contract that the town was already disputed? I mean, just for example, something like cost of remediation of the stockpile in seventeen, how can we justify putting eighty new units into our sewer district without knowing they're going to pay their fair share for the cost of the sewer project and all that? So in the past, the town board has made things that both the contracts are expired. And we actually, we agree with that. So what our opinion is, is yes, we agree that the contracts are expired. So we are going to oppose our new contract instead of that. And basically, the contract, the new one, will be in the same fashion, but without the arbitration clause. And also require the town pay interest on the quarterly payments that they have to be paying in the past. So I'm going to read these agreements, and then it gives us the board a vote on these. Now, we normally do not pass resolutions on work sessions. But because we need to give the supervisor a timely response to his letter, and we are in arbitration, so if the county responses are essential, we need to do so tonight if the board is in favor of doing this. So I'm going to read through this. It's one I have, uh, sure, I have a, it is a fully permissible thing for us to do. This is a published and noticed meeting, so there's nothing inappropriate by doing such a thing tonight.
Correct.
Absolutely. And our council, earlier, he has a meeting for one of those other clients on the next week work session, but he was kind enough to come in with his colleague, Mike Nodley, who also represents the village. They came early and were able to fit us in. So I'll just read through these. Resolution acknowledging expiration of agreement between the village of Goshen and town of Goshen regarding Arcadia Hills Sewer District Number Two, and decline to further extend that agreement. Whereas in January nineteen eighty-five, the town of Goshen and village of Goshen entered into an agreement wherein, whereby the village agreed to treat sewage from Arcadia Hills District Number Two and the village of Goshen ways where a treated plant... And you know, since these are statements for Hamiltonian, can I just say Hamiltonian, Arcadia, or Arcadia in place?
No, you can do it.
What's that?
You can do it once.
Okay. So Arcadia and Hamiltonian Park, just to be clear.
Those are different dates.
Different dates, yeah, special dates. Whereas the agreement provided expiry date of May thirty-first nineteen ninety-four for Arcadia Hills and May thirty-first two thousand four for Hamiltonian Park. Whereas the town and village have, by earlier resolutions, agreed to extend the term of said agreement. And whereas the town of Goshen has announced that there is a real need for new intermunicipal agreements going forward because the existing agreement is sixty-plus years old and no longer works and need, no longer works and needs to be reworked and no longer provides viable means for managing sewer financial transactions, which the town of Goshen supports. Whereas the village of Goshen shares the assessment of the town and has determined that it is in the best interest of all for the town and the village that the expiration of the agreement referenced above be acknowledged and that its terms not be further extended in order that the town and village might negotiate the terms of a new agreement on a clean slate. Now therefore, be it resolved as follows. The agreement between the village of Goshen and the town of Goshen dated January twenty-fourth nineteen eighty-five, carrying expiration date May thirty-first nineteen ninety-four, is hereby declared expired by its terms. And for Hamiltonian Park, February fourteenth nineteen eighty, May thirty-first two thousand four, hereby declared expired by its terms. The mayor of the village of Goshen is hereby authorized to deliver to the town a copy of this resolution together with the statement of the method of building the village shall utilize such time as a new agreement is executed. The mayor of the village of Goshen is hereby authorized to commence negotiations on behalf of the village with the goal of reaching a new sewage disposal agreement with Arcadia Hills Sewer District Number Two and Hamiltonian Park Sewer District Number One. And to be clear, this is the step in negotiating a new contract to town board. We are still going to be treating our sewage. The agreement will essentially remain the same except for arbitration clause and two other points. And this is so we can end arbitration, sit down at a table together, and work something out that will make sense to both the village and town regardless. Because the town feels that this contract does not work, the village agrees, so it makes no sense to add new units on a contract that clearly does not work for both bodies. With that, I'll open for any comments before a vote.
Wait, you need someone to make the resolution, don't you?
Uh, so...
First, just a second.
Well, are there any comments?
Yeah.
No, someone, sorry.
Okay.
You go.
No, just my only comment is, to be clear, it doesn't end the current arbitration proceeding that's going on. We're just...
The still arbitration vote for the two villages?
Right, absolutely. The questions that are still out there before the order, those will be final, are finished through the arbitration process.
Sure, absolutely. Any further comments?
I have one in the one, two, three, four. Whereas, the village of Goshen, I think it should read, "The village of Goshen has determined that it is in the best interest of both town and village that the expiration of the agreement referenced above be acknowledged." Rather than shares the assessment of the town.
Shares the assessment of town.
It would read, "Whereas, the village of Goshen has determined that it is in the best interest of both the town and the village that the expiration of the agreement referenced..." I don't want any wording to have any impact on what's going on. It's separate, actually, from what we put forward here. So if they have, and we use their terms, saying, "We only need for a new intramunicipal agreement going forward," blah, blah, you know, the wording that is quoted in the previous paragraph, I think it's enough for us to say, "Whereas, the village of Goshen has determined that it is in the best interest of both the town and the village." Or you're taking out shares the assessment of the town.
I mean, I understand what you're saying, I just know that our council put this together. And I would be concerned that deviating from their provision.
I'm not.
I know, I have opinions.
I, I, I would, I'm perverted, I don't believe in evidence.
Then you've been on the only one who feels that way.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, you walk along, like?
Trustee Char.
Aye.
Trustee Matthews.
With my comment on the record again.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Stewart.
Aye.
Please do a follow-up for the second one, bro. This is for the second one for Hamiltonian Park.
Trustee Char.
Aye.
Trustee Matthews.
Aye, with my comment on the record again.
Trustee Smith.
Aye.
Trustee Stewart.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. And hopefully, and I believe this will be a good thing, because it'll serve as a catalyst for us to finally end arbitration and begin negotiating an agreement with the town, because we necessarily need a new agreement. I strongly feel that we need new users, but it needs to be done in a way that's bearable to towns and villages alike. It shouldn't be done in a haphazard manner with an agreement that the town has previously said they disagree with. Okay, unless there's any further comments, then I'll move on.
No, I would just, I would just agree. We have all of these potential new users out there and all these various developments. It would just be insane to drag all that into, basically, a whole new process. Maybe no sense at all.
And clarity, clarity in the process is necessary, and I think that's what we need to go to. That ostensibly is what the town has been requesting for many, many years. We're receiving now.
I mean, new users are in the best interest of the town and the village. We have this new sewer plant that's a resource that could benefit everyone. And we need to use it, and we need to, their, have the interest that we do. Get these new users on board and prepare the infrastructure, which is going to be a requirement and something that will have to be done when new users are added. Those INI issues have to be addressed.
I'll just say, last thing, is that it just makes no sense to be there for two, plus years and have the town has been saying these contracts are flawed and bad, and bad, bad, bad. Yet now they want to add another eighty-five to a hundred homes to a contract that they think is flawed. It makes no sense.
So it's time to get us to step up to the plate and do it responsibly, then, maybe?
We've made attempt after attempt, proposal after proposal, and got nothing in return. So hopefully, this will serve as a catalyst to make some real progress and save our taxpayers some real money by having news outside of arbitration. We don't need an arbiter to tell us what the new year looks like. That's what we were elected for, that's what the town board was elected for. There's right and wrong. We shouldn't need to be told by a third party, puts right and wrong for our community. Okay, now we'll go to the rest of the agenda. The first thing I wanted to discuss tonight, you know, some of you may have been following the news, but two weeks ago, there was a large amount of news that came out of Albany. The tax cap that had been discussed since former mayor for office, even before, they apparently have reached some sort of kind of breakthrough between the senate, the governor, and the assembly on passing a tax cap that will impact villages and school districts alike. I think that property tax relief for our taxpayers is essential, and it is a very good step. However, the reality is the state, if they pass it the way it is without mandate relief, is shifting the burden on the villages and school districts to make very difficult decisions in the future. There's no question, we need to get reductions in property taxes for our residents, and we need to do that. And if this goes through, we will have no choice but to stick to less than two percent next year. But what I would like us to do is begin planning now for that to happen. So that next year around budget time, we know that we will be able to meet that two percent requirement, and we've done our proper due diligence prior. What I have done is I've talked to all our department heads and asked them to put together their upcoming budgets for next year to find out, as is the way things are right now, what our increase would be a year from now for the next budget. So then we can find out if it was, if it's going to be a five, six, seven, X percent increase, how much remainder is left over we would need to cut to meet that requirement. Obviously, this past budget season, we cut out everything that was essential. Everything that we could cut was cut. Seven percent of the increase was retirement, medical, and workers' comp. We can't control. And the rest was salary increases, utility costs, gas going up, salt going up, things like that. And that brought us to nine point eight. So if we had to bring this past budget up to two percent, it would have been very, very... Essentially possible. Right. So we need to recognize is this is the direction things are moving in. And I just want to start the conversation, and once we get from our department heads what their upcoming budgets will be, well, at least, obviously, have to put that in, include retirement costs, net costs, everything else, salaries and all that, and find out what it's looking like. And then that'll bring us forward's conversation to the after of the future. Outside that, I really just want to start the conversation with the board. If anyone has any comments, by all means, I just want to just have us be cognizant of that and aware that as a board, that's probably coming down the tunnel.
I think it is the biggest false-sell PR move that Mr. Cuomo has made that sounds so good to the public, you know, as a selling point. It is so unrealistic as to be totally non-viable. It puts the burden on the cities and the villages primarily, who are the ones who have to provide additional services that townships are spared providing such as sewer and water. And that there is no way that the state can sit there and discuss putting a two percent cap when they know the unfunded mandates that they put on our shoulders exceed that before we open the door for business on Monday morning. So it, it, it looks like such a fine selling point and is so absolutely impossible as, from my perspective, as to be irresponsible of them to be pursuing on that level, because it's not honest.
I agree with your assessments. Reality is, I mean, listen, legislation cannot go through, but if it does, we need to be proactive and start talking now. It's going to include conversations about cutting costs and additional revenue and everything that we can do under the sun.
And also, it will allow us to be a play, and I think unite, I think we should be united with our fellow cities and villages in order to say, "Here's what we cut. The DPW group by half, your police department by half." I mean, whatever the real number shows, the bottom line is to make it a real picture for what simply saying two percent raise is going to mean to a municipal that's struggling to say this.
Absolutely.
I mean, I, me personally, I just think that we should move on with our other agendas, not focus so much on that, be clinically aware of it, which we are all, and wait, see if the hammer goes the way it goes. Because, you know, I think that there's going to be a ton of other people sharing their concern. And maybe you, as the mayor, can write you a letter and just, you know, send it to Albany along with probably ten million other municipalities doing the same. Just kind of giving them that input, saying that this is, how this is going to affect us, period. And then, you know, across that bridge, we come to it. I mean, you know, can't get pre-planning for something that's not a fact yet, so...
I think that, and I agree, we don't know what's going to happen. But if we don't even take this out of the equation, start planning for next year's budget now, it can only be a good thing. See, those are things that are going. And if it doesn't pass, we find great ways to cut costs or increase our revenue to bring our taxes down even better. Any further comments before we move on? The next thing we want to do tonight is, as we all know, we've been working very hard on our infrastructure improvements for our sewer system. We've been doing very, very good things and making some very large gains. And a lot of that is attributable to Superintendent Nuzzelis and Art Tully and Mike Tully. And they've done some really great things, and I want Mike to come in here tonight and give us all an update on things that I've done and about what the next step is to move forward. And anytime Art wants to jump in as well.
I will say, feel free to move on.
I brought some pictures just to share of the sewer replacement job on Berry Street. Just a couple of brief comments on that. The challenges to that job was, one, we had to divert the flow of the sewer while we were doing it, and two, we had to divert the stream around the job. And when we, when we got to round to finally excavating, we, we found that the original pipe was laid. It didn't have any fall to it. So over it, what we replaced, over the eighty feet, there was only one inch of available pitch. So we split it evenly between the whole job. And I feel, you know, it was, it was a good job. The old tile pipe was in really bad shape. You can see it shows the connections on either end, so everything is pretty, pretty solid.
Is that the old stuff here, right?
Yeah.
On the side?
Yeah.
You can see it's all...
Yeah, it was just, yeah.
We also screened it out, eliminated a manhole.
Right.
To speak more to that, that was one of the manholes we were having excessive overflows on at times after rain.
Right.
So that manhole is gone, and the problem with that manhole was when it overflowed, there was a stream right next to it.
Right.
So that overflow, and it was one of the ones we've been talking to the D E C about, is now eliminated.
Exactly.
Which is the second major overflow we have eliminated after the West Street manhole. Because that was one of the chronic overflowing areas, and that's been one of them as well.
Yeah, we did very well in the last storm. I think we reported just a slight surcharge in two of the manholes, which was significantly less...
Well, that's terrific.
Yeah, significantly less than what had happened previously. Additionally, we're designing the sewer line of replacement from the Heritage Trail over to Sew Street Plant. At that location, we have three pipes that come together, and one undersized pipe taking the three pipes over to Sew Street Plant. And that's composing a backup. We suspect that that backup has come all the way up through the village because the pipes are laid so flat. Once you get an obstruction down there, it's felt all the way through the village. And we think that with the replacement of this pipe, of the large pipe, we should see a reduction in further in backups in the village. So those plans have been completed. We've got reviews to do with the D O T, the Health Department, D E C, and the county as well. Because it's at the Heritage Trail, it adds some input as to what we're going to do there in terms of crossing the tree out. So that's in the works. That'll probably go out to bid, by the way. It's not going to be done by Mike and his guys. It's about six hundred feet of pipe, it's a large pipe, thirty-six inch diameter pipe. It's, it's going to have to be bit out. Hopefully, we'll get that done in the next couple of months.
Is that it? And while it won't be a small amount, the cost of that is within the amount of budget for infrastructure improvements for the business of the years to come. So we're going to hit two more runs and stay in the budget. And you mentioned that the last storm made the two overflows. Do you feel there's correlation between that and the Year Street? I know it's hard to say, but based on...
I think, I think those, those overflows would be eliminated once we get this new pipe in. Because I think they were caused by backups in the system. Now, what we still have to work on is reducing the INI, because that's another problem that we, that we need to address. But this pipe replacement has nothing to do with eliminating the INI, just, you know, it has to do with improving the hydraulics of the system. If we improve the hydraulics, we should eliminate the surcharges. And if we can eliminate the INI, that'll give us additional capacity in the pipes. So that's a double factor.
I just know from witnessing the St. John Street, because I live there, that overflow seems to be much, much less intense than it had been in the past of equal amounts of rain.
Right.
Do you think that because of the Year Street replacement, that the INI...
Yeah, we streamlined, yeah, we streamlined the flow, and it is moving better through the village now.
Right.
And that's, that's all helping, contributes to that, yes. And we've, we've thought, we've eliminated a lot of INI. We've been going around fixing problems, so we've got a list of some of the...
Well, yeah, look, the larger ones was out on the Old Scent Oak Cheese. There was a sampling manhole, which for some reason, years ago, there was a drain that went to a catch basin, which, when we had heavy floods, was working in reverse. So we disconnected that.
The catch basin was collecting stormwater drainage and taking it directly right over into the center sewer, so...
And we put a rain cap on that manhole in Dykman Drive.
So it's no longer rainwater going into the tree that grows?
Right, right, right. And we, ongoing survey with Arts Guys, Craigville, we identified some inflow coming in from the Craigville sewer main. We've been working, there's, we've been doing a manhole survey. We've got approximately one hundred sixty-eight manholes going around. We're opening every manhole additionally, or it's got a manor documenting the condition of every manhole, so... By the, well, we're probably about two-thirds of the way through, I would say.
Well, I thought of that mapping we talked about.
Yes, yeah, yeah. But every, every manhole will be physically looked at, so, you know. And we've, we've found a lot of small things, but they all, they all add up. Tomorrow, we don't know what we're going to find, but we've had a sinkhole in front of Blitz, the old market variety store.
Yeah.
Which is the old gravel arch. And we're going to excavate that tomorrow, and that might, we don't know what we're going to get into when they open that up. That might be something that might pertain to sewer, we don't know.
Sexual smoking, yeah, right?
Exactly, exactly.
Very good. Anything else that you guys can offer for that? It sounds like everyone's been very busy and, just to say, I mean, like, your crews been excellent. Aren't you, your crews been excellent? John works to doing a great job.
Thanks.
And I know you've been coordinating things happening with the D E C as well.
Right.
So just a great job to everyone involved.
Appreciate it.
Any discussion or questions for any of your trustees?
Great job, guys, great job.
All right, wonderful.
Good. All right, so, why can't I be out there tomorrow, so I can't make the meeting in the morning?
Okay.
I'll stop on the way by.
Okay, that'd be good. All right, thank you very much.
Good night, everybody. Thanks, bud.
Last, last thing, I want to...
What's that?
Do you name it, or?
No.
No.
No. Because you need to shake on a...
Generally, I want for the, for the...
Well, I was thinking that I was going to call and...
Maybe give a nice picture of yourself with the pipe being laid, yourself.
There you go.
For one of my shiny little films.
Can I use the picture?
Sure. The last thing I want to talk about tonight before opening up, if you have any questions. I want to talk to our, I want to talk to you, if you want to talk now. Our, obviously, we're trying to squeeze as much money out of budget as we can. We're trying to cut costs whenever possible. And, you know, even more urgency is brought to it by the previous conversation of the tax cap. One of our costs that we really should be controlling, and it's never been addressed in the past, is our overtime cost for celebrations. For the Memorial Day Parade, Great American Weekend, there are Goshen community events. And I think it should be Goshen putting the bill for those events with regard to our police overtime, D P W overtime, for Memorial Day and Great American Weekend, for example. What we're finding is more and more outside groups are coming into the village to do fundraisers, reuse our facilities and things. And in the past, the village has put in the bill for police overtime and D P W overtime. Whether it's five K runs that run around and we need to put in additional cops, or the biggest, exactly, would be the St. Patrick's parade.
Absolutely.
Which is a countywide parade that, you know, people coming from not just Goshen, all over the area. And, you know, we get, we get a little help. This, this past year, we got some help from the town of Goshen and the state troopers we're very thankful for. But the reality is, our overtime, D P W cost for, overtime for police and D P W is still very high. So I think it behooves us to develop a strategy, have this village board moving forward so these outside groups want to come in and use those facilities, or have something in the villages we require that overtime, we have a way to recoup funds from those individuals. It's just right, it's, we're not at a point where we can afford to pay for police and D P W crews for other people to have fundraisers here. And it's, it's unfortunate, and we appreciate if you want to come to the village. You can't blame it, it's a new place to have anything. But it's, it really shouldn't be the village taxpayers footing the dime for that. So I introduce it for discussion.
Well, you know, I have to say twelve times from the dice.
Absolutely.
I'm trying, I love the St. Patrick's parade, and this year, I love it better than anything, providing in that sidecar. But I have to tell you, we requested, we get through the media, we requested it directly. For there should be assistance from the county, since this is a countywide parade. In the past, it was handed off from one community to the next on a yearly basis. So no one community ended up putting the bill. We love having them here, we love having them ready to come to our village, but they, they're, wherever they're going, it should be funded by the county rather than following the village taxpayers. Totally is a part of yourself. And some mechanism has to be realistically, and when I say realistic, I mean that can both ends. I mean, realistically, if there is, I mean, a cancer run, you know, we have to deal with what's really necessary to try to get from it, and that's what, you know, we're like that.
Right, then it should be just a better planning, for example.
Probably so.
If there's a five K that wants to happen in the village, don't have a go up North Church Street, across Murray, and require a police officer station, you say it's a true.
That's right.
You still in the village, you can still generate a profit for your fundraiser, but it does never see burden of our forces. There's just things like that.
What I think the policy should be set, well, I agree, and I don't know about this, and most of the times, is that, uh, it's my thoughts on it. It's not a village-sponsored event, they have to pay. I'm not specifying any event, I don't care what the event is. It's not a village-sponsored event, they have to pay. I believe that prior to their event, they have to post some sort of financial security until we determine what the actual cost is, and refund the difference to them. Let's try to collect it from on the back end, never mind after.
I agree, and it's, it's not about pleasing people or some people let's go. But if, at least, if there's a concrete policy and they know that ahead of time, if you're having, I'm just saying, five K is the easiest thing to talk about. But if you're having a five K and you're charging thirty-five dollars a runner, if, maybe, to me, our cost, you only need to do thirty-seven a runner. Something that is, it's equitable, that can cover our cost, but at least to be upfront, because it's not fair to these outside groups for the village to say, "Okay, well, for this, it's this, and for this, it's this." But I think we need a consistent formal policy regardless. Because, you know, if you're going from case to case, obviously, certain things, you don't want to, you know, like, a cancer run or something like that. We don't want to have to bill those people, but it's, you know, we don't want to open ourselves up to litigation if we don't want to knock the other, and the next one comes in and says, "Why do I have to pay for this?" The other guy did it. So I don't know what the amounts are, I think it requires investigation. But again, I just wanted to start the conversation. If it's something this board is interested in, I'd be happy to work with, and I'm sure that you'd be happy to work with me on talking to the chief and Mike about what the costs are for overtime per person and find out, I mean, quantify that and develop a policy.
Well, I agree, chief, and I believe Mike does the same. Whenever there is an effect, after it's over, they sit down, figure out how many additional manhours... figure out how many additional manhours went into that event. So I think both of them would be able to tell us from the last.
You've tried it too.
Yeah, and you've tried it too, for the last several years of events. So are those events, this is what the overtime was at, particularly here.
I think that if you would kind of put that towards the county, the county would say, well, you stand to benefit because you have an influx of people coming into your village that are going to use your village, patronize your village, et cetera, yada, yada, yada. So I think that would probably fall in death here as far as the county goes. But I think the organizers of the, of the events are the ones that should be taken with whatever responsibility is to. St. Patrick's Day parade, stuff like that. And, you know, I don't know what the whole situation is with the Great American Weekend, but certainly it's a, it's an organization that has its own funding, that, that gathers its own funding, so they should be able to come out of their office as part of the, you know, the cost of them putting on the event to be able to pay for DPW police service. Some of those events we sponsor. And we're an actual sponsor, so I see that as our contribution towards the event. But everybody's got a 5K on their little parade. We don't sponsor, we've got a whole bunch of things. Yeah, which we don't sponsor that require many services. But we don't sponsor the St. Patrick's Day parade.
No, I'm saying. If the onus is on the organization, then the St. Patrick's Day parade committee might, you know, go to the county and get them to say, yes, we can provide this. And if they can't, then maybe it's just a matter of finding an additional sponsor.
Right. So and they might be able to, you know, then the other aspects of it is, is these people, I'm not telling them, or trying to be the broker of their business, but, you know, these organizations should be able to, now my understanding is Joe Fixit doesn't need sponsoring a tour Goshen. He doesn't.
I, I think we have to get a status of what.
I'm saying there's, there's community-based, whatever you want to call it, companies that may kick in something for specific purposes and be able to allow them. Like, you know, data distributors might want to get their name onto.
But that would be, I'll be honest with you.
Be honest. But I'm just saying, so when we, when we go throw this out to them, we can kind of give them a direction to go on so that they can look to, to, sure, maybe elect something or get somebody to sponsor, you know, because I get people every day come in and ask me to sponsor this, sponsor that, and buy this, buy that. So I'm saying to go to some of these other organizations and ask them, you know, you want to be tagged with this, this could be your dig. But I was always under the impression, but the more I think about it, I'm quite certain that Joe Fixit doesn't write a check to the village on a tour Goshen. And we provide the services that goes with that, but he in turn kind of sponsors, organizes, and orchestrates that, that old, old gig.
And I think at some point, in some instances, when the public realizes they should keep this in mind, when you're talking about fundraisers for autism, fundraisers for cancer, sometimes it is just a matter of planning to be able to cut down on the use of our facilities. And I think that's a wise way to look at it, just so we can make it as any type as possible.
We want them to come, use our facilities, accommodate the budget, commend us for our businesses. And the nice thing about Goshen is our community has a great deal of these service organizations that do so much and give businesses that sponsor so much. So I, I think that, you know, these groups should still be able to maintain and do the same things that we've done. But it just needs to be in a way that is beneficial to both the groups that come in and the taxpayers that pay taxes to it. Okay, so I'll work with that, I'll work with the chief and Superintendent Nuzzlesis. We'll put them together and play the follow-up session. We'll have something for everyone here. That was all those on the court event, did you have any other things?
Yeah, I just wanted to add one thing since our attorney, Mr. Donovan, but both of our attorneys actually, Mr. Donovan and we're here. As we all know, the arbitration is scheduled to proceed again on Thursday and Friday. Mr. Bloomfield was supposed to be cross-examined on Thursday and the town, Mr. Perdue, formed their experts. They hadn't heard from them whether it was going to be their accountant or their other experts. But those two court dates have been scheduled for some time. Mr. Donovan informed us that he's been emailing and calling the town attorney over the last week, I guess, at least the last several days, a number of times about those two court appearances, which I say have been scheduled for a considerable period of time. And there have been issues raised about whether there's a room available and certain things like this. And they refuse to confirm those two court dates. And since they have repeatedly criticized us for allegedly dragging our feet about this, I would hope that those two dates, which have been scheduled for a long time, will proceed as scheduled on Thursday and Friday.
That's all I have. I got kind of one just thing, a personal note to add. Next week, sometime next week, if she doesn't get fragged on the way out. My waitress is, is on her way, she's, she's scheduled to depart Iraq about the day after tomorrow to make her way back home. And she probably won't get here until Thursday or Friday of next week. And so just putting an invite to anybody that would want to come. I know that some people, some friends of Elsie's or whatever are putting together a big contingent of folks to go over to the airport to greet her when she comes in. But, you know, if anybody from the village wants to come or the Chronicle is more than welcome to come, I think the record's supposed to be there and kind of stuff like that.
But is that Thursday, you said?
Well, I will, I'll know like maybe 48 hours in advance.
Let us know.
You know, so I'm retargeting, say, Thursday next week. And don't know exact itinerary, but, you know, I should by Tuesday next week know the itinerary.
Cool.
Might have to. She narrowly, they had, they had, you know, she was at the place where they was at where the bombs went off there over the weekend, something like that. She was very fortunate. One of her colleagues got slightly injured. It worked for her. But he, he was lucky because he decided that he was going to get up and go exercise and he was leaving his thing and as, as it got warm up. The kid just got a little aftermath to it, but he's okay.
Exercise saves lives?
Yeah, in more ways than one.
That's great. Keep us posted.
All right.
There's no other comments? I'll, as a mutual gesture.
So.
On the table first.
Hi.
Thank you very much.
Enjoy your office.
Do you like the first?
Sure, sure.